It's 6:30 on February 6th. Amy Manzali acting as chair tonight since Mr. Camidge is not here. I'm going to call the meeting to order and we're going to start with our public comments. Take that in a moment. I think everybody, the TRS here for the basketball game. Okay, we're going to close them up with comments and move on to agenda review. I had one quick item to add. I wanted to give an update and just have a brief discussion about the possibility of electric buses for the district. So I don't know where we want to put that. E? Sure. You know, that it was B. Anyone else have anything to shuffle around or add in? Okay. All right, so minutes of the previous meeting. And I just wanted to make sure, we really didn't approve the January 2nd minutes at our January 23rd meeting?
We don't typically on the second meetings. It's usually like a work session type of meeting. So far, that's what we have here.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion for both or one at a time?
I'll make a motion to approve both the January 2nd minutes and the January 23rd minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay. So both sets of minutes have been moved and seconded. Any discussion in the motion? Anyone catch any corrections that need to be made? I looked them over. I thought they looked great. Thank you, Sandy. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. All right, thank you. And going right into our board reports. Do we have a student here tonight or anything indirectly?
He has prepared his statement.
That would be wonderful.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to read this on behalf of Jacob Page, Student Senate Representative. Good evening, school board members. I'm terribly sorry I'm unable to attend the meeting due to personal reasons, but I will share with you what has been occurring across both the Student Senate and the school as a whole throughout the past several weeks. Winter carnival preparations on the end of Senate have almost fully been completed with the event schedules being finalized in the coming days and deadlines coming in for other activities throughout the week. This includes the return of an event that had been vacant four years and has members of student body, of the student body very excited. Mr. PA. Mr. PA is a talent show slash male beauty pageant that draws a lot of attention in winter carnival points and has shown promise in its return to be a resounding success. Amongst the classes, decorations have become the central focus as each grade dedicates several days out of the week on putting together eye popping decorations for each grade to admire. Also in the news amongst the school, each one of our winter sports teams looks to be in championship contention. Both basketball teams as well as pack hockey, each have very few losses on the season and look to bring banners back to Pembroke Academy. Again, I apologize for my absence this evening and thank you for your time.
That's a cherry for her board and we thank him for that. Typically, we open it up for questions. I mean, does anyone have any messages to convey back?
Just I want to comment on pack hockey because that's amazing to hear. I mean, been involved with it years ago and that program has had to excel to get to this point because it was a pretty lackluster, you know, 10 years ago, so.
Oh, yeah, they are having an excellent season. They, they went deep in the playoffs last year. And this year they are, they're just a very deep roster. The group of kids have been together a long time and they're having a really ball.
Just a side note on that. It's senior night, Saturday night at the effort at 7:00 PM. If anybody wants to, actually, the activities start at around 7:00 for the seniors. So we're recognizing 14 seniors total. Three managers, three managers and a lot of players. So please come, we want to pack the stands.
All right, so thank you for that. We'll move on to the facilities report, which was in the board packet. And it looks like Patty is going to run us through. Sure.
So this is from Josh Coughlin, Facilities Director. The gas boiler project has been completed at Pembroke Academy. These boilers are up and running and will be used during the beginning and end of the heating and when the wood chip plant is down. The entire project was funded through the Esser funds. The baseball batting cage has been completed at Pembroke Academy. We were very fortunate to be able to install a double wide batting cage with turf next to the third base dugout on the baseball field. The baseball program would like to thank Mr. Neil Bryant, 51, for his generous donation to fund this project. The PHS access point to the kitchen door has been completed. This allows for controlled access of who is coming and going into the kitchen while allowing easier access for kitchen staff to receive their daily deliveries. This project was funded by the state of New Hampshire Security Grants. And lastly, I would like to applaud my entire crew for all of their hard work as we were in the middle of the winter season. They continually come to work with a smile on their face and a positive attitude. And I cannot thank the facilities crew enough for what they accomplished on a daily basis. Thank you. And he says, thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions, Josh.
Thank you to Josh and the entire facilities crew for the report and more importantly, all the work that goes behind these accomplishments. Any questions that we want to ask Patty to relay to Josh? Or comments? Okay. Let me just get back to my agenda. So moving on to SAU Board, SAU Exec Board reports. Jean?
Nothing new to report. Next meeting is February 14th at 5:30 at the SAU conference room.
And principals report. Let's start with Anne, please.
Okay, I wanted to highlight a few student athletes. I don't believe I had an opportunity last month to tell you about Annalee Stekser, who scored her 100th point for girls' basketball. That was very exciting. Thousands point. Yeah, 100th was a long time ago. But we did have PA senior Cam Plum, who did score his 100th point in pack hockey recently. So those are two huge milestones for those two students. We had a National Honor Society project that went off the ground a few weeks ago. They hosted a dance for our skills program. There were approximately 50 to 60 students here for that and it went really well. It was great. Also, last week, we were fortunate enough to be able to host a unified basketball game during the school day between Pembroke Academy and Merrimack Valley. And that was in front of the entire school and it went very well. And the Spartans emerged victorious, but it was, it was great. I had a lot of people say that that was the high point for them, like staff saying that it's the high point for them for a long time. So that was really nice. And then finally, I heard from our robotics coach that this past weekend, teams 134F and 134K were in the, were the tournament finalists in last week's robotics competition in Coe Brown. And with that, all six PA robotics teams have now qualified for the state championship, which will be February 17th at Manchester Community College.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for that report. Seems pretty great. Wow, wonder if it's a school of excellence or something like that. Bill?
Good evening. When TRS continues to be busy building in 2024 in the building, we recently have finished the second iReady diagnostic reading in math. And in the PD Day, teachers administration hunkered down early, dive into the data and we have developed seven areas of focus for their reading per year. One highlight is increasing students vocabulary because that's an area of growth that we have attended five and basic diagnostics. So that's where we're going with that. TRS winter curriculars are in full swing. Our girls team won the other day, so they're on to the semifinals. Fortunately, despite the boys' best efforts, they felt the absence last night. But we were talking to the coach, she really played their hats up. Like, you know, they didn't get out, they got out talent, did not outwork, which is the way you phrase it, which is terrific. And then our drama group is pretty much practicing every day for the spring musical. Stuff's going on, which we call page turners. We have an increased enrollment with that from some initiatives and some good PR over announcement from Mr. Gridley. So that's really going really well. Our digital learning specialist, Ms. Santarola, security grant that you guys approved for about a month or so ago. And we had our safer internet night tonight, first one ever and went very well. We had about 25 families come through, gather some prizes and hopefully learn a little bit of safer internet behaviors. Our fifth and sixth and 78th grade bands have both completed their performances under the direction of Ms. Blackman and Mr. Lane, all here at Pembroke Academy. Both groups did an outstanding job. And finally, I want to conclude kind of my update to say thank you to Ms. Boji, who's been a parent for the, for Pembroke for over 20 years. We definitely sent her off in style on Friday and it was great to work with her, even the short period of time. She will be Ms. For all the records, three years.
I have one question and I'll turn it over to everybody else first. I hear in the national headlines that standardized testing results are showing unprecedented gains in filling up the gap that was created in. Yeah, like for where students should be typically on average during COVID. That's what I was trying to spit out there. I don't have those right educator words. And so how are you finding that the data you're looking at is comparing sort of with that national trend?
So historically speaking, all I have to compare three groups to is from the fall, but we made some nice steady growth. We definitely did identify that vocabulary was an area that we needed to improve. And it wasn't the fact that kids didn't know vocabulary, they couldn't apply it out. The example that we use is consume, you know. It's a food, but if someone says, oh, you consume, it's social media. Kids can't make that transfer over. And we found kind of through the analysis, that's where they're getting stuck. So our reading and ELA teachers are really hunkering down to really work on those kids and apply it. And UA teachers who get involved are doing board chairs across the building to kind of up that scale up. And in terms of nationally, I would have to dive into it a little bit, but I definitely have seen improvement both in math and reading for our fifth through eighth graders from, from the fall. They've both showed completing a year's growth in a year's time.
All right, and Wendy?
Okay, so over at Hill School today, we had a purple day for Unified Arts, which means they all came together because we had 80 students who were showing the UA teachers kind of like auditioning, but for their showcase, their variety showcase that's coming up on the 20th. That's definitely cutness overload. So all day long, they had them kind of rotating in and out to share with them and make sure they have their props and what stage direction and what they need. So that was adorable. We have coming up, I think it's next week, we have our NEAT testing, which we got voluntold that we were doing. So that'll be happening coming up next week for our fourth graders. 50 of our fourth graders were randomly chosen to participate out of 66. So as you can imagine, some kiddos are like happy that they don't have to participate, but they come in, they run everything, they bring the devices, the kids take the test. So I think we're all set for that. Next week actually is a really busy week for us. We're also hosting a math empowered. We've done some work through Carol Moster over the last several years. We're hosting the Lakes Region Cohort in our building. We love having them there. So we'll have about 10 teachers from other schools come up with about eight teachers that we have in our cohort that will spend some time in rooms. And they, they kind of meet beforehand, talk about the lesson, do some planning, go observe the lesson being taught and then they debrief it. It's been a catalyst for quite a bit of change for math in our building. Tomorrow night, I believe, is when the library in Pembroke is having a reception. They're hosting, we have art that will be displayed. They'll have refreshments. So it's another one if anyone can go at 6 o'clock. Unfortunately, I can't. But we're really excited. Ms. Murphy's, one of the things she wanted to do was be able to reach out into the community more. So this is where I know it was something that had happened in the past. She wanted to start doing that again. So we're excited about that. Palace has their sweetheart dance this week, very popular. So that's kind of the talk of the town. We also just finished our second round of iReady data. And we've met once already about it as a kind of intervention team to review the data. We then collect additional data points because we believe, you know, children aren't just one data point. We look at all the different types of, some of them are standardized, which would be iReady. And then we have a few other kind of screeners that we do. And we look at it as the total piece to see kind of what the picture is going on for a kiddo. So that's what we're doing. We look for, with this one in particular, we're looking at growth rates. Now that we have the second data point from iReady, it's opened up a whole different world for us to look at. We also look at patterns with like Bill was saying, you'll notice things like vocabulary or anything like that, that we will then say, what are these instructional implications? What are the things that we can address based on the information we have? Something to shout out, Ms. LaRose has been doing a great job with our fourth grade band. They come in every morning into my office at 8:00 and they play just for like 30 seconds. It's one of the highlights of my day. And I'm telling you right now, the group coming up is good. They are good. This morning we got, it was a Taylor Swift song. Yeah. So, yeah, we're very proud of them. Couple more things. Liz DuKlo is, she was the New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. She's headed to California for a week next, I think it's next week, to do the teacher orientation, the national teacher orientation out in California for a week. And then she's got a lot of really very interesting things coming up. But so she'll be out, out there representing New Hampshire. And then just a couple of other things. I know one thing that in particular you had talked about or we had chatted about was foundations and the work we're doing on phonics. And we just with our mid-year benchmark, spent some time analyzing particularly in K1, the phonics instruction and how that relates to different assessments and things that we've had. And we've seen some pretty staggering growth. It's awesome. So we're able to really see how honing in on those types of instructional strategies are helping. I wouldn't say it's just the program. We have a lot of teachers going through letters training and it's like catching on like wildfires. So you hear, I mean, we get really into the nitty gritty about all the stuff we're learning. And every time you go to a session, you just walk away like, you know, it's really good information. So just to kind of keep you updated on that, it's going really well. And we've looked at it historically, so where we would expect, where our kids have been historically at this time in previous years compared to where we are now. And it's a pretty, pretty significant increase. So that's been great for everybody to see that all their hard work and jumping into something new is always a challenge and a little bit of, you know, worrisome. But those types of things we're seeing. So that brings us to the end of Bill.
Questions or comments from the board?
Actually, I will, I will, I'm going to do this every year when they come in to do this testing. So anyway, these kids, essentially the whole fourth grade class is losing a day of instruction. So a waste.
It's one of those things that we do it because we're required to do it. We set up the environment for the kiddos. They're used to iReady. We do growth monitoring, so we try to make it as, you know, painless as possible. What I will say is our coaches have done a phenomenal job working with grade levels on pacing everything and making sure that we're still able to give the kiddos what they need. It does take away a day though.
And I'm not criticizing the schools at all.
And we get to randomly select a family to do a test too, just so we get that.
Yeah, yeah. But they all know that they have instruction.
Right.
Anything else? All right, let's move on to the Hill School update from Melanie.
Not much. We were, excuse me, we were going to meet tonight, but it was too short notice and there wasn't enough people and a lot of key players who couldn't make it. We were going to meet the one in the snowstorm, so that got canceled as well. So the next one is February 20th at Hill at 4:00 PM.
And that's about it. So go to the Hill Renovation Committee meeting and then stay for the talent show. This is for the public, not the board. This is for members of the public. Jean, NBC update?
I'm ready for this. So anyway, we finalized everything this past Thursday on our warrant. The NBC did recommend a $300,000 cut to our budget, our proposed budget number. So it went from $34,093,987 to $33,793,987 with a vote of 6 to 3 on that one. The Paris contract passed 9 to 1. There was a little bit of, the one was concerned over the A scale, but then. Yeah, so that, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, that passed 9 to 1. And then I just written it down twice. As far as this $40,000 being withdrawn from the school building capital reserve, that was a 10-0 vote. $100,000 to be added to the special ed trust fund from surplus, passed 10 to nothing. I did have to go back and have them reconsider. Mostly these votes are, aside from Article 3 and Article 7, most of these votes are from the prior week. So we reconsidered, it had failed initially, was not recommended initially, 3 to 7, to add 155 to the school building capital reserve because the numbers that they were working off of stated that the capital reserve was at, I believe, 1, 526 and we had set a goal of 500. In reality, we're pulling out $40,000 for Article 5 and then there was about 110,000 still outstanding to be paid for the phone system. So that comes to the, we're basically, we were placing 155. So we didn't have that information prior to the, two weeks ago. So had reconsidered and was recommended 5 for. Then we go to Article 8, the school technology expendable trust. We're at 10,000, that passed 6 to 4. And then the vehicle expendable trust was not recommended, had 10,000 in vehicle, expendable trust was not recommended, 4 to 6. I believe we were over our target, which we had set 50 or 60. I can't remember whatever the target was. Don't look it up. But anyway, we're over our target and our goal anyway. So they did not recommend that one. $25,000 to the equipment installation and labor expendable trust fund. I think the same reasoning, we are at our goal. That was not recommended, 3 to 7. And then the site improvement expendable trust was again not recommended, 2 to 9. Basically, last year we gone in, added extra to it for the possible track replacement. And now that's not in the near time. And that's not in the timeline right now. So it's been pushed down a little bit. So they did not recommend that also. And then the town. The town warrants, everyone passed. If you want me to move to camp, would you like me to go through the town a little bit? Well, here, if I don't mind.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we can save it. Thank you though for the offer.
Then yeah, Thursday, 7 o'clock at the PA auditorium.
It's 6:30. That's the session. There are NBC meetings at 6:30 that the hearing's at 7:00.
So that'll be on Thursday in the auditorium.
And can you just clarify the expectation in terms of are all board members expected to attend? And do we have a plan all ironed out for who's presenting?
Yes, we have a plan that's all ironed out, Carrie. And I'm going to sit in the wings. And then, yeah, it's, you know, expected if we're there, obviously, in the downtown. So he won't be there, but he can be there, that'd be helpful.
I am working half the shift, so hopefully I'm not like a hundred percent. And if I will, I'll text somebody, but I can be there.
I have it on my calendar to be there. Comments or questions for the NBC report from Jean? Okay, thanks Jean. And thanks everybody for going through these reports. You didn't add anything to the consent agenda, last chance? Okay. We are done with number six. Last call and give some donations. Okay, chugging right along. 8A fiscal year 24 update.
So I think I mentioned last time. Last time that we were going to make some updates when the retirement and health insurance numbers had come in this past month. So we did go through and update a bunch of POs. We also updated, now that we have some, you know, historical data for the school year, updated some of the utility projections and such, just looking at, you know, trying to get as an accurate spot as we can to this point, knowing things can still happen. So we took a little bit of a different approach. The number changed quite a bit. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it and I just wanted to explain the way we did the update. So if we, if we hadn't used this method, you were, you would be withdrawn $531,000. But Amber, adding the trust funds that will be reimbursed for is a $334,000 revenue source that will come in. So we can kind of count that as an offset, even though it's revenue. And we took, we had frozen the budget, but it's been kind of a soft freeze and the principals have been amazing. I, you know, we didn't shut the system down. We just said, hey, we're going to communicate everything we spend. And they have been fantastic, like, hey, we need this, we need that, very small amounts. Okay, go ahead. So we pulled over pretty much our entire budget, like pretending we're not going to spend any more money except for some supplies and such, because I wanted a more accurate picture of, okay, if we stay on a hard freeze, where would we end? And we potentially have $140,000 if we're not spending any money. We do need to spend some money. But I really wanted to kind of map that all out and not sit here just saying, well, we're, you know, half a million dollars. I needed to have a, you know, a better sense because we're getting much closer to the end of the school year. So we'll keep a watch on that. At some point, we'll need to decide, you know, there are some things, since the budget's been frozen for months now, that we didn't get to purchase for this year. And so we'll take a look at kind of where we're at and decide as we go, what, how much we want to release to be purchased and then have to be thinking about funding the warrant articles and, you know, how much do you want to try and hold aside? The warrant articles tend to get funded only because they don't get funded until the books close. We don't know how much money we're going to have until the books close. So that's kind of a nice way every year that sometimes they do, even though you think you're going to end with no money until everything is done and tied out. We don't really know. So we're doing our best to have a really accurate picture of where we're at. And that's what we know to this point.
I'm just going to try to restate what I think you said. So when we look at the attachment for 8A Pembroke summary that was in the board packet, the stated bottom line on there is ending the year with a deficit of about $194,000. Yes. But you're saying if you stay the course on the soft trees and other measures that you're undertaking, you might, you know, asterisk, big asterisks, might end the year with a surplus of $140,000.
Correct.
Okay. With that sort of restatement, thank you. Any comments or questions?
So yes, what I'm, just to clarify. So the last time around, we were looking at $390,000 short because of special ed. And you're offsetting that by anticipating pulling money out of the trust?
No, I, the trust, what I was referring to were the projects that we had the public hearing for that will be withdrawing money from the trust funds to cover those that are in the budget. So we, you approved a pretty big chunk at that public hearing.
So that doesn't lessen that 390, though, does it?
Yes, so the 390 was all the way up to 530. And that's why I took this action, because that number kept growing. And we've, you know, just in the past couple of weeks, we, it's been an increase of a $36,000 deficit. We're continuing to have additional transportation costs, additional special ed costs. It's, you know, the McKinney-Vento transportation comes and goes and we just keep trying to adjust the POs as things happen to keep it as accurate as possible.
And at the end of the year, let's just say that special ed bill is $350,000 or 300. We have a deficit. We would first take that from any. Um, we would first take that from any of the expended money that we have left.
That would be.
We wouldn't just go right into that.
That would be the board's choice, but right now, you're right, we potentially, like Jamie said, big asterisk, could have a hundred and forty thousand, the board would need to decide, you know, do we want to take some money out of our special ed trust fund, or do we want to just leave that money there? And, and what we end with, and you may not have a choice, depending on where we end.
Which brings me to the point that our warrant for a thousand dollars is concerning at this point in time, because, you know, this is unanticipated this year, but, you know, there's no certainty that it won't be unexpected next, next year. So I'm, I'm almost, you know, we can discuss this later, but Article six looks scary at this point in time.
Oh.
Yes, we don't have anything, and even if we do, even if we have a hundred and ninety-four, we're still taking, it may come from other sources, and just, uh, special ed, and assuming the majority of that probably is special ed.
Okay.
So, you know, these two hundred thousand, we're gonna have to hit, you know, a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and ninety out of that, and that puts us down, but the hundred back in now, we're even getting closer, we had set a goal of five hundred, which I think is, given this year's short sighted also, but, um, that's just.
Jean, I, I hear all of your concerns, and I think they're completely valid, but I also was, I took comfort in just what I thought I heard Jesbitford saying, which is, we can have some hope that this year's unanticipated costs might be the worst of it. And that the initiatives that she and other folks in our special ed department are taking, we can look forward to that bearing fruit, both for the benefit of students and for the benefit of our bottom line, starting next year and into the future.
I agree full-heartedly, except we can't pay a bill of hope, so we have to consider the contingency for that.
Yep.
So, anyway.
Other questions or comments on the update for this fiscal year? Okay. All right, enrollment update. I think this is just an FYI, but please take it away.
Yes, um, so Amber updated the enrollment tracking sheet, the colored sheet that's in your, um, in your drive, and is also in the process, and it may already be done, of setting up a spreadsheet, because you asked to have tracking for where the students go. Uh, so we're gonna try to do that now on a regular monthly basis, so every time she does an entry into the enrollment, she also does an entry into her spreadsheet, why, that student either came and went. So the changes, um, you had asked at the last meeting, um, October through January, on how we get to six students. So, um, students came to P A, um, one Allenstown came from Keene, this is typically his moving, um, a Tri-Tester student from Prospect Mountain, and two Pembroke students moved in from the Manchester Nashua area, so that was four, and additions, and then there were ten withdrawals from October to January. There was one Allenstown student, um, who moved to homeschool. There were five Epsom students, um, two Winnebago, two homeschool, and two Prospect Mountain. And there were four students from Pembroke, um, to Adult Ed, Pinkerton Academy, and homeschool. And that was a total difference of six.
I just have a quick paperwork comment.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason why Amber couldn't just put the student, what are we calling it? The student tracking on the same document as the enrollment tracking, like on the bottom half?
Maybe, yes. Like, she's, she's doing a spreadsheet, so I'll see how big that is and what it looks like, and if we can combine it into one, we will.
This is already a pretty. I know, I don't want it to be any wider.
Yeah. But yes, we'll see if we can, it's, it's gonna be difficult when you start, you know, you have to write in.
Even if it was a second sheet.
Yeah.
On one spreadsheet.
Right.
Or just a second page.
Sure. I think that's what she's attempting to do. I agree.
Um, other comments or questions on enrollment tracking and student tracking? And thank you, that additional information is something that we had asked for, so it's really nice to get that turned around. Thank you.
I will, probably should've said this earlier, but, uh, I will want to probably try to address something in non-public, because you're having enrollment.
Okay.
I don't know if that adds a little better.
Uh, we already have smaller C, so that should come through. Okay, um, big letter C, eight C, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget warrant. So the action that I, I, the only action that I think you need to take this evening is to determine whether or not you're going to change your vote on the warrant article, and whether or not you're going to, um, you know, recommend the three hundred thousand dollars in cuts to go in with the same recommendation as the budget committee, or whether you're gonna change your votes and say, no, we no longer agree with this number. So that's really the decision you need to make tonight.
Um, Jean, can I ask you to lead us in this discussion, since you are most closely connected with the numbers? I'm happy to if you don't want to, but.
No, no, that's fine.
I think it would be great.
You know, first off, I will say that we should, um, recommend the number that they gave us. It started out extremely high, which basically would have been, you know, zeroing out this year's budget and cutting. Um, so, at this point, one of the things that I had asked a few weeks ago, the NBC, is if we had presented to them a responsible budget. Not one person said no. People were not committed, I think it was more along the lines of, look at that number, I understand it, but, you know.
I hate it.
I mean, right, exactly, that's exactly it. Um, and to walk away with, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar recommendation to lower it, I think is very fortunate. I mean, they could've come in with that two point one million that they first, was first motioned. Uh, and, you know, I think it's fortunate for that, I think we've got a long road to host still with the town meeting, because I think this is going to be a shocker. You know, I kind of like monitored some of the social media pages, but I haven't seen much of anything. Um, nobody's talking about it, nobody's here, no, you know, I think we had a total, up to this point through NBC, of maybe five people that came to those meetings. Um, and I anticipate, just by seeing that, that at public hearing, you're gonna get twenty, twenty-five, maybe we'll get a couple more this year. Uh, I think really, once more work gets out, at another month, a month and a half, a month ago, before school district meeting, that's, I think, where we've got to focus moving forward, but, you know, what the contingency, contingencies we have to expect. Um, but personally, um, I think we should go with this three hundred thousand, you know, uh, lowering, and come in with a thirty-three, seven ninety, seven ninety-three, ninety-seven.
So.
I just took.
Yeah. I think.
More than minus three hundred thousand.
Yeah, but what Jean is saying is, the number that the NBC said.
Yeah, the NBC number.
Um, so let's just roll with assuming we want to, the board wants to use that number. So then, what do we do in terms of, um, you know, we have a cut sheet in the amount of a hundred and, call it a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, so do we just vote that number and say, here you go, Patty, figure it out? Do we, do you want us to provide you direction? You know, what, what are your thoughts on this?
Um, we have thoughts, we met as an administrative team this morning, and in anticipation of having this conversation this evening, um, we were hoping to have more conversation in non-public. I think I would be comfortable with you if you wanted to take action, or actually, if you have the NBC's number, if you want to leave your vote to five zero, unless someone motions to reconsider, your vote stands with the new number, unless you want to make a motion to specifically state, we are, we are recommending the budget committees, just so that is for the record. Um, and then we can talk in non-public, and we'll figure out where that, that's gonna come from.
Um, does anyone have any questions or further comments, further questions on this topic at this time?
I think it might, does it make a difference if whether you vote on it or not? But I think having it on the record, voting on the NBC's number would be, you know, showing, I think, us to, to work on it.
So my, um, I agree with you in spirit and concept. Um, my only concern is a little bit of numbers gamesmanship. Uh, we don't have a fifth board member here today, so a new vote would be four to zero, as opposed to five to zero. And that four to zero would be printed on the paper, so I wonder if we just do like a verbal, round the table kind of, you know, like, I agree with the NBC's number. I mean, I'll say for the record, I agree with adopting the NBC number, but it looks like Patty has thoughts on this.
I was just going to remind you that, um, we did post a meeting for after the public hearing, so I don't know what's gonna happen after the public hearing, but you, you can vote, we have a board meeting, so if you wanted five on there, you could re-vote right after the public hearing.
That, that, and that number, I mean, could, we have an NBC meeting after the public hearing.
Yeah.
Um, so, I don't anticipate a change, but a couple of years ago, the, you know, the people tried to change the number in the last minute, and I, I put it out there a couple of weeks ago, saying, we've had plenty of time, and I think we have about five meetings, concerned, just concerned in the school. So, we've worked through it, we've got to that point, so surprises at the meeting afterwards, are they possible? Yes, but, you know, I kind of don't, I don't anticipate it, um, just because I, I ask nicely. I hope, you know, it's, um, we've, we've had plenty of time to work at NBC, so that, doing it in the eleventh hour like that is, is kind of up.
Yeah. And, and also that, um, you know, just, just saying, that three hundred dollars that I am in favor of cutting from our proposed budget, so that the school board recommended budget can be aligned with the municipal budget committee recommended budget, that amount, that three hundred thousand dollars, is more than twice the amount that we were considering cutting from our budget. So going beyond that, especially at the eleventh hour, makes me really uncomfortable. Um, Melanie and Carrie, you certainly don't have to say anything, but do you have any comments on this before we move on?
Not really any comments, I think it's just the beginning, but I agree with the NBC number, I think I'm thankful that that's the number they came up with, um, and I'm okay supporting that, and hope it stays that way.
I tend to agree also, but I was gonna say that, I was, I've been going to the NBC meetings and just listening to some of the numbers, I was kind of, well, I wasn't shocked at the first, um, request or the first motion of reducing our budget by two, almost two point two. Um, but I was surprised, um, when they settled on three hundred thousand, I thought we were looking at a lot more. So I think we need to make this work.
Okay, uh, let's move on. I think we're on to new agenda item E, which was, um, my agenda item on electric buses. D, I'm skipping right over D, March meeting location. Yes, please. So it's really important that we, we decide what we're doing. Um, Josh got a quote, and if you're feeling like you're gonna have an overflow room or you need it in the gym, and you want to hire someone, he's up to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so really, I think the decision is, you know, if we do it in just the gym, Jason Lane is available, and he's the one that set up the audio for us the last time, and it was just the gym, so one location in the gym, we can hire Jason at a much less cost than that. Or we do it in the auditorium, and we have everything there set up. Um, I don't know how many people you're expecting, I think the closing audience holds five hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the general?
Oh.
Uh, I mean.
Those, with chairs?
Close to a thousand.
Yeah, with chairs.
With chairs definitely, okay.
We could have sixty people on the hotel.
We don't know. Just don't know, we, we, we could have, you know, we could have fifty people send, or show up on Thursday night, or we could have two, and it's the same thing for our meetings, school budget meeting, it's, could be five hundred, it could be a hundred and forty-seven, whatever, was I here that?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the consideration I think we've talked about is, is, um, it's mostly acoustics, and, you know, there were a lot of people at the microphone saying they were having a really hard time hearing, and we can do the closed caption, but, you know, it's also, if you want to do a presentation, you can't see on this, you know, they can't see on the screen, you can have larger print available, but, I mean, it's definitely a, a much more difficult room to hold something in, but if you think you're gonna exceed the capacity of the auditorium, we should plan for it, um, I don't know.
I feel like, I don't know, Sandy, or Dan, or Patty have been probably here the longest. I mean, has there ever been more than five hundred people?
Not even in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, I, I feel like the most there's ever been, like, ever, 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 for anything, ever, was like two to three hundred.
Yeah.
The one concern is, you don't want to change midstream. Like, you don't want to be in a situation where, okay, we have the, the auditorium, and we don't have anything set up.
So can there be a contingency for, like, satellite, for, you know, live video stream on a screen? That's where you got the fifteen thousand dollar quote from, because you have to, if you have, if you have two locations, all of the people in each room have to be able to hear anyone that's speaking, hear them and see them, and that's not easy to pull off with technology and sound.
They also, they, you know, in, in a satellite room, they also need to be able to speak.
Yep.
Uh, and then the voting portion of it would turn into an absolute nightmare, so.
Yeah, you have to have two polling locations for any ballot votes set up, and checklists and everything, double.
And I, I, I think after Thursday night, I mean, can we reserve the decision until Tuesday?
Sure.
And I think after Thursday night, to see what happens, and.
I think we can, I think we cannot worry about the fifteen thousand dollar quote, I think we can just acknowledge that we're gonna have it in one or the other, and that would require anybody to set up any satellite, anything. And it's a matter, and Jason's holding the date for us, so if we decide to have the gym, he's prepared to set everything up for us.
As far as acoustics, which are less than stellar, what, were there speakers, like, basically all around here? Was it just in front?
Never, how he did it.
A gym, just the.
Yeah, it's just who it is. Can I, can I just ask a different question? So I attend a lot of public hearings, and I see a lot of hearing impaired people show up with these things. I don't know what they're called, or how much they cost, but they, they wear a little necklace thing, and they put this little thing on the desk where people are talking. I mean, could we not either buy or rent, you know, fifty of those?
And there's no.
I implemented someone who complained about not being a teacher. And I told her that if I didn't bring my glasses, I wouldn't be able to see anything. So maybe, you know, bring the support you need if you're anticipating having hearings. Okay.
Do we have enough?
Should I cat systems?
Yeah, do we have enough systems and equipment that we could pay Jason Lane to have the stuff there just in case we just move the people? But how, we don't, or no, we don't?
Do you mean set up the gym?
Like gym, the gym, just in case, and if we.
We need to.
We'll, we'll set up the people, I see.
So, um, Jason uses his own stuff to set up.
Yeah.
So that, that doesn't impact using the auditorium. The issue is that the setup is the lion's share of the working anybody. So even if, because you, you have to take down the cord, and you're, yeah, so, um, you're probably gonna end up paying him.
Yeah, you would have, definitely have to pay him.
Right, I was just thinking, if the room was all set up and it was ready, could we get a quote that we just move all the people, we'll help them all get.
Well, Jason will charge whatever he was gonna charge us. Anyway, there's no charge for the auditorium, so we can have the, if that's what the board decides, we can have the auditorium ready.
decides, we can have the auditorium ready. The only thing is you've got supervisors of the checklist checking people in, and you're having people leave the room, and we just, I don't know how they would feel about that.
You have to redo it, I think.
Probably have to redo it. But I don't think, I don't ever remember, I remember us planning that we're going to go over capacity.
We were.
Never going over capacity, not even close.
We moved one year. Everyone impressed, moving from the auditorium to the gym.
For a meeting?
One. Just a thought.
Let's just tell everybody, if they promise they won't come, then we promise we won't have it in the gym.
Yes.
I'm totally joking, of course. So we'll put this in the agenda for the next meeting, and that still gives us enough time. We'll keep the gym booked, we'll keep the auditorium booked, and we will jettison the $15,000 quote.
Got it.
Plan? We're not many, 15. Jason, I don't remember how much he charged us, but.
No, if we had it.
Yeah, if we had to do it, I, yes. Okay, so based on our, moving on to school buses, based on our last round of putting out the contract and getting only Dale, and complaints we've had about Dale's performance, not only just the cost, we talked as this board and at the executive board about trying to do something about it. I volunteered to look into electric bus options, given the funding that's out there right now. So I have made significant progress. I had updated you guys once or twice over the course of the months with Highland, which is out of Rhode Island, and they do the whole, like, greater northeastern part of the United States, and in particular, they are really fluent with getting lots of federal money for grants. And so I had reached out to the chair of the executive committee, asking if we could set up a committee with, I suggested, a member from each of the school boards in the greater SAU 53 to start exploring this idea, because obviously everybody wants to know, like, well, how much would this cost? What would it entail? Where would the buses park? Like, you know, we need to have a fully developed concept before we start, you know, saying yes or no to things. Unfortunately, I have been struggling to get some good reception with that idea with the timing right now. The chair did not remember that these conversations had happened, and I think anticipates, maybe is not running again, or anticipates not being elected again, and there being a change to the executive committee leadership. And so the unfortunate thing is, the current round of EPA grant funding closes at the same time that the executive committee meeting would happen, so we would not be able to submit paperwork to get in on round two of the current round of EPA funding. So there's three rounds, round one, round two, round three. Round three has significantly less funding and is going to be like a lottery system. Round two has tons and tons and tons of money and has been underutilized, and we would be very likely to get grant funding. So I just wanted to get some guidance from the board on, you know, sort of like how to move forward, just in terms of numbers. These are super preliminary numbers, but right now, and this is just for the Pembroke School District, we pay roughly $60,000 to $65,000 per bus per year. With this program through Highland, we will be paying something like $30,000 to $35,000 a year per bus, because the grant funding provides $200,000 per bus. So it's a huge, you know, off-the-top cost reduction. So the grant funding provides $200,000 per electric bus, and when you sugar it all out, that comes down to like $30,000 to $35,000. But it's not a straight-up delta between the 60 to 65 that we're paying Dale to the 30 to 35 that we would pay Highland, because we then have to employ drivers, whereas the Dale number includes the bus and the driver. But my estimation is that we would not be paying $35,000 a year to the school bus driver, just based on the number of hours a day that the school bus driver drives. So it's one of those win-win-win, get out from Dale, spend less money, perhaps include buses at PA, protect our children from diesel emissions, but I'm just kind of antsy because all this money's on the table, and we might not be able to have access to it if this grant application is not signed, that, that I'm not willing to sign right now because it says, you know, you have sign-off from like all of SAU 53, which I don't feel like we have right now, based on this, you know, one conceptual conversation that we had six months or 12 months ago.
What is the time, right? What's, what, the, the date?
So Jason Raposa at Highland Fleet is my main contact. The app, the EPA, again, because the grant program is being underutilized, they just extended the application deadline to the 14th, just of February. Yeah, and they, Highland would like to have the forms in, you know, not on the 14th, after the executive committee meeting on the 13th, because they just can't process grant paperwork that fast.
So what, and, and what else I pass along to you is the, on the town war is, there's a warrant for the purchase of a, like, a trash truck, which, just.
Yeah, go ahead.
So one of the things in it, now it, truck's like $720,000, and 687 is coming through the bull's biting money. The, the town decided to, now they probably only need this much money, add another $100,000 to that, to raise that money, to take it from the equipment trust, and to be able to fund any accessories that need to go along with that, including the installation of the charging system and upgrading the, the infrastructure, the, the service coming in. Now, currently, they do have three phases, so what, you know, what I think you, you might be missing out there is that portion of it. Where, first of all, where?
Yeah, no, let me, let me take a step back here. So this is to submit an application to see if we qualify for a grant, which would then fill in the blank of how much grant money, which would then allow a potential project to be fully budgeted, which would then, I think, all districts committee needs to be formed to answer all of those questions, for this project to then be voted on by all of the district committees, if not in 2025, then in 2026. I'm not at all saying like, let's approve this project today and go, 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 without all the details. I'm saying, wouldn't it be a shame if we missed out on, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
25, that's what they estimate the entire SAU 53 would need for buses, 25 buses times $200,000. And by the way, if we sign, if we sign the paper and we get the grant, we can say no thank you. But if we don't sign it, we can't get the grant money.
Is there a way to facilitate that before the 14th?
That's the last six.
I know.
We, we have a hard time getting 12 people out of 23 to come to a meeting, so our executive board meeting isn't until the 14th, as you know.
It's the 13th.
No, it's the, it's the 14th, so that's even worse. I don't know how we would get, and, and I don't know that executive board members would feel comfortable making a big decision like that on behalf of their boards. They would want direction from their boards. So it would mean full board meeting, which is, I don't want to be a W downer, but I've just tried to schedule those so many times, and to get 12 people to come is very difficult.
Now, what is round three, but, I guess that's another.
It hasn't been scoped out yet, except to say that, you know, when the one, two, three rounds were put out, there was like, you know, the, like, the chart, you know, like, there's this much for three, and this much for two, and, or sorry, this much for one, and this much for two, and this much for three, and these are going to be merits-based, and that's going to be a lottery for everybody that hasn't done it yet.
Is it, that funding in two, one and two, if it's not, if you said it's being underutilized, is that rolling to three possibly? Do you know that?
It is a possibility. I mean, no. No, because there's, you know, that would be answering the question of the fate of every school district around the whole country that's having this conversation this week that we're having.
And you can't do just Pembroke. It has to be, I assume.
No, I mean, that, that is an option. Certainly, you guys could authorize me to sign this form to apply for a grant. We would scope it down probably to six buses, you know? That's an option, you know? I'd be happy to do that if the board wanted me to.
Does that, if we did something like that, I mean, would that take away from, I mean, I know Trichester uses Smartspend, so they're not involved in any of this, and they, they may or may not want to be, but.
Yeah, I would want to invite them to think about it.
Right, but if we did it solo, that's a possibility. That doesn't incite the ARBA. I wouldn't think it does since Trichester's where it's at, but.
I'm just wondering whether or not we would need that to be on a warrant article, honestly? No, because we're not accepting any funds, just this round, you're not. I mean, that would be like saying, you know, like, well, did you go to a warrant article to get that Internet Safety Day money?
It's just an application to see what, it's not.
So there's absolutely no commitment when you.
Correct.
Okay.
It's just to say if you were to accept, how much you would get.
Yeah, but we're going to enter in some type of an agreement with this company that you're working with, I'm assuming.
No, it's, no, it's just to apply for a grant to see if you qualify.
But if we, yeah, if we do qualify, so for instance, we have a couple of districts with solar projects, and even though they're not, probably not going to purchase it, they're going to do a lease, the board doesn't have the authority to enter into a big long-term lease without order. So I'm just trying to gauge whether we would need that in the future.
That's right. I, I would say that this is something like the actions that this board took to hire LaValle Brezinger to design the school, not build it.
I'm thinking it doesn't hurt to do an application to see if they want to give us money, and there's nothing that's holding us to do it.
I'd be thrilled even if we could just, I mean, because again, that would be six times 200,000, you know, if we got it.
I think we need more than six.
I know, that's what I was just going to say.
We're, we're bursting at the seams, six.
Yeah. And, and you could think about high school at that point.
High schools, freshman crossing the road.
And I had picked five for PA, based on the student population, and, well, it would just be for Pembroke.
It'd just be Pembroke.
Oh, right, right. Hold that one here. Okay, I haven't broken it out that way.
So how many, you know, there are pop.
Like 400? Yeah, for PA, how many Pembroke residents? Yes, I'm sure I'm there.
Yeah.
Be approximately 300 or 400.
Yeah, approximately. What I would be comfortable doing is if I could get sort of a sense of the administration and the board as to a number, and then I would give the enrollment number to Highland and have them fine-tune the actual number. So if you guys told me, you know, 12 or 13, and then I would tell him the enrollment, and if he says, go with 13, that's what I would do.
I don't know, we're not looking beyond anything but buses right now. We're not looking at infrastructure or anything.
So the way that, the way that Highland Fleet works is they provide the buses and 100% of the electric charging infrastructure, and then you provide the driver.
Right, no, I mean for the grant, not ju, not for.
Correct.
The, the grant is just.
No garage, no ancillary power source, yeah, just the buses. I just want to clarify in case any of you goes home and looks at this grant program, it is to replace diesel-powered buses. We don't actually have any diesel-powered buses, but Highland Fleet has diesel-powered buses, and we can collaborate with them to make sure that there are diesel-powered buses that are going to be buses, they're going to be decommissioned and take off the road, taken off the road permanently as a result of our beginning to use electric buses.
Like the trash truck.
Yeah, that when they replace the trash truck, they'll come in, and the state comes in and actually pours something in the engine that seizes it so you can't ever use it again. And the chassis has to be dismantled, so instead of making it throw a new engine in it. So.
Yeah.
So you never know how much money they'll give us, and then we can go, hey, Alastair, guess what?
Right.
I mean, it's nothing hurt to get a number.
Yeah, and anybody that's done grant work, you know, if we try this and we get something, and then A, we can show our new shiny thing to the other school boards, B, we can use our shiny thing to leverage further funding for stage three, you know, when you have like a, a nut to start with, and then you can use that as matching funds to grow it, is typically a successful strategy.
Are there any hydrogen-powered buses out there? Totally serious.
Yeah, no, I think the answer is yes, but I think that the prevailing thought about renewable fuels and alternative fuels is that hydrogen is going to be used to power like lawn haul truckers, like I'm, you know, driving from New Hampshire to California this week.
I'll just get a, you know, totally sold on battery power just because of the way they, you know, want to talk about the environment. Okay.
Because of source materials?
Yeah. So.
So does, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion for Amy to find for the grant to see how much money we would get to purchase, or no, to contract with Highland plus name.
Have a sleep.
Have a sleep. Boss, are you going in?
For EPA funding.
For EPA funding for electric buses. There you go.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'm excited, thank you, guys. All right, that's right, let's work it. All right, close some of these tabs, back to the agenda, policies. All right, who's going to leave this? Is it going to be Patty, or Carrie, or Melanie?
Had a little bit of a conversation before the meeting started, and I know that I do not have enough notes to give you any advice on which policies need to be deleted, which we need to look at. I don't know how much time you guys have had to work on these, or if we need to just hold off.
We've had a little bit of time. Can I give you numbers?
Oh, yes.
At least the first category, so I'm pretty sure we can wipe out some of those, and you could just verify them. Maybe we can get rid of some last next time.
Sounds good.
Carrie, I could with the ones I showed you, I'm not talking about the first one. Yeah, no. So ACA, I'm looking at the 1992 second reading one, that group. So ACA.
Yep.
Is sexual harassment from, like, long ago, and there's no NHSBA thing, so I'm thinking it's probably.
It's covered some.
It's missed, yep. Same with ACE-504.
Yep.
We already know we have stuff on 504.
Yep.
ACE LEP. Pretty sure we don't need it.
Yep.
BEDF. Voting method two.
Method?
I don't think we need it. Okay, because there's not, these are all that there was not a school board policy. And I even tried to check in that list of that database.
Yep.
Next one, GCBD dash one. Medical leave, which makes no sense. I don't think we need that.
We, we have federal forms.
GCBD dash A. Professional staff benefit. I don't think we need that either.
No.
The only ones that were weird was BE, this is a separate list. You may not want to write it with the other ones.
Are you proposing that we're going to take an action on those policies tonight?
I'm hoping we're going to be able to, the ones I just gave Patty, I think we can get rid of as long as she has the time to verify because they're covered somewhere else.
I can already, okay, those she gave is correct. I'd, I'd love to make a motion then, that we rescind ACA, ACE dash five oh four, ACE dash LEP, BEDF, GCBD dash I, one, one dash one, GCBD dash A. I'll second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All right, I think just for the record, let's state that our primary rationale is that these are policies that don't have a foundational policy recommended by the School Board Association. And they are topics that we otherwise cover in other policies, or they're covered by federal law, or they're covered by collective bargaining agreements. So we do not need these policies. Other comments or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The other, there's a couple other ones in that section, the BEDD. That's about rules of order in a meeting. And then it's literally a paragraph that says, Robert's rule is complex, do what your school board wants to do. So I don't know what we're supposed to do with that one, see.
So the I don't know. I mean, the, so some, it's, the advice is not to adopt Robert's rules formally because that does not allow you to deviate from them, and then you need to get the book and memorize how every procedural aspect works in that book. You don't want to do that. So if you don't adopt Robert's rules, you could say you generally follow them. But if somebody makes a mistake, or you want to reconsider a motion and it doesn't follow the exact rule, you as a board can decide that you're going to allow something to happen.
This leads to the, and, yeah, cross-reference is back up on.
The School Board Association one says, the Chair shall adopt simplified rules of order following the basic structure of Robert's rules. So I think that's what Robert did.
Yeah. So does that mean that you ran out and changed them?
Unless you want that in policy.
No. Adopt the Robert rules one or the one that
Or the word that's, it's
Yeah, that's what I want.
You have to School Board Association word.
The new major School Board Association one is the one we said, right?
Yes.
That's the
BEDD.
Yes. So are these in nineteen ninety-six? I should have a little.
Can I just ask for clarification on that one? All four not using Robert's, my beloved Robert's rules procedure, it's just a simplified version. It doesn't really make sense in this context, but, so are we saying that we're going to get rid of the old nineteen nineties BEDD? And we're going to update it with a current New Hampshire School Board Association version of BEDD?
Yes, and, and when I say current, I say two thousand seventeen.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
That was my thought.
Okay. And do we need any more clarification, discussion, research, or are we ready to just take that action?
The only clarification I would have is, it says we would accept the NHSBA one, and it says right in there that it's, they're calling it BEDD dash R for the simplified one. Do we need to say that? Or am I reading it wrong?
So if it's a BEDD dash R, that means they have a BEDD. So we should look at both of them? Okay, you want me to clarify that?
Yeah.
Tiny question.
It's weird because it's listed as BEDD at the top. But then in the wording at the bottom, it says the BEDD dash R. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Confused and sodden.
Oh, okay, so it says that BEDR provides a simplified set of rules. So it's like an appendix to the policy, so your policy would say that you're going to do that. And unless you, you don't have to have the R unless you want to actually have a set of rules that you're following.
Okay.
Motion to rescind BEDD.
And you want to approve the NHSBA version?
Yeah.
And approve the NHSBA version.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Do you want to do the other two? We were just recommending the New Hampshire School Board Association. Yes, why don't we just do that?
Great. That was GVEBC and GVD. I'm sorry, GBJ.
Yes.
Here goes all money.
So the first one is stop gifts and solicitations. You know, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to review that.
That's fine.
Is it? I just want to double-check to make sure it's not, I think your policy was really restrictive, basically saying a teacher couldn't accept a gift from a student at all. And did you make sure the School Board Association is more flexible than that?
Except if a teacher gets a mug for Christmas, we don't want to tell them they can't have that.
Yeah, because exceptions to the policy are acceptance of minor items that are generally distributed by companies through public relation programs. And then this is just no solicitation, but I think we're
Okay, good.
Yeah. And it just says that people can't send out flyers through the school unless they have, you know, superintendent approval and stuff like that.
We do that now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
We're going, so you're talking about JVEBC and the NHSBA version.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to rescind the existing GB EBC and replace it with the current New Hampshire School Board Association version.
I don't think you need to rescind your policies. You're just gonna, it's already adopted, so you're gonna, you're revising your policy.
Okay.
To revise it.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So amended.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, this might be a nice time to thank Melanie and Carrie. Thank you so much for helping us with this work.
There's one more in that section if you want it.
Let's just do them one by one.
Well, we got a vote yet.
Oh, wait, I
Right, I know, so all in, all in favor on the GBEBC update? Aye.
Aye.
Grant finale, GJ.
DJ. And that's the same one, we're recommending the New Hampshire School Board Association, and it pretty much just says that the superintendent needs to keep records and not disclose it to other people. It's a pretty basic policy.
Much simpler than ours.
Yes, it is.
Patty, did you have any concerns on that one?
I did not get a chance to look at that one, so.
Is it short and sweet and I can look at it right now?
The New Hampshire School Board one is very short and sweet, but ours is a little longer. Two little paragraphs.
If you feel rushed, we can wait.
I don't feel rushed because it's basically saying I'm going to follow the rules, make just what I like. Yep, that's perfect.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to update GBJ to the current School Board Association version.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye. 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 All right, any other policy actions to take tonight?
Into VR one. Well, we, I just, the only thing, I didn't know if everybody had a chance to look at the bottom thread. Revised policy that I, so we can push that one.
Yeah.
Push that one.
I didn't get a chance to look at the changes that you did.
That's fine.
Okay.
And, and then for the next section, Patty and Melanie and I both kind of wanted to, because these are pretty deep and thick. So we were kind of hoping that maybe we could set aside some time that we could just get some guidance from you on some of these.
That would be great.
Yeah, some of them ask like who the grants administrator is and who's processing the money.
Yeah, we have to fill in, yeah, we have to fill in, yeah, I usually do titles, not names, but we do, that has to be filled in.
Right.
And we don't know who that's.
Yes.
We can, I can do a Google Meet with you guys too, if that's easier for your schedule, see? You happy to do that? Yeah, that's great. Lot of progress. Anything else on policies? Yeah, that's fair, fair. This is good work. We need to get these cleaned up.
It was a lot of
Yeah.
You're living in this.
You know what, Jean, teamwork makes the dream work.
That's why you're the committee. That's right.
Okay. Public comment. Shout out to any members of the public that would like to come to the next meeting and share your comments with us. I'm going to close the second round of public comment. Any informational items? No. Okay. Let's see, we have need to go into non-public for the dismissal, the dismissal, promotion, compensation, or disciplining of an employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her, as well as matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. So by roll call vote, Carrie? I'm a yes. Jean?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
Okay. And who do we need to